Okay, I'd like to call this Roxbury Board of Selectment Regular Meeting, August 1st, 2023, to order. The time now is 7:02. And the first order of business is regular minutes, approval of the minutes from June 6th, 2023. Can I get a motion to approve that?
I make a motion to approve the minutes, June 6th.
I'll second. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. This month, tax collector request for refunds. We have three of them. It's $443. These are all three of them were sold motor vehicles, so they were still in that tax. So we have three refunds to give. I'd like to get a motion to approve those refunds.
I'm making motion to approve the three refunds.
Thank you, Russ.
A second.
Perfect. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Perfect. Board of Selectment Commission and Board Appointments. Our first is for Library Board of Directors. This is a vacancy. This is ending 11/21/2023, so this position would come up. I do have a recommendation from the Library Board for Edward Fuzz Turner.
Okay, I make a motion to appoint Edward Fuzz Turner to the Library Board of Directors.
Excellent. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next is for Recreation Commission. Vacancy, it's 7/1/2023, for a term till June 30th, 2027. This is for Sean Murphy, who already sits on the commission.
I will motion Sean Murphy to continue on the Rec Commission.
Perfect.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Recreation Commission, 7/1/2023 to 6/30/2027, Lauren Lord.
I recommend Lauren Lord or appoint Laura Lord, Lauren Ward, to the Rec Commission.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Recreation Commission, also July 1st, 2023 to 6/30/2027, Lori Sulewski, also a reappointment.
I'll motion Lori back on the board.
Second.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Recreation Commission vacancy ending June 30th, 2025. This is for Matt Conway.
Okay, I appoint Matt Conway also.
Okay, thank you very much.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is Inland Wetlands Commission, September 1st, 2023 to 8/31/2027. That is for John Smollega's position.
All abstained.
I recommend John Smollega for Inland Wetlands Commission, and that's a reappointment.
And I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What is state? Inland Wetlands Commission Alternate, September 1st, 2023 to 8/31/2027, Julie Mangino.
Same Julie Mangino.
Julie's designed from the commission, so that's state.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we will continue that.
She did join up and found, just didn't have the time.
Okay.
Okay, so we will continue that to next one. Okay, we also have a constable appointment. August 1st, 2023 to 7/31/2027, for Joe Wackowski.
Yes, appoint Joe Wackowski for as constable next term.
Second.
Perfect. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Another constable position, August 6th, 2023 to August 5th, 2027, for Jason D'Souza.
I'll motion Jason back on as a constable. Continue.
Excellent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Okay, so our first order of business is solar at Booth Free School, and I believe we might have a picture here. Okay, so it, just so you can see, the front of the school is actually towards the left of the screen. Obviously, the school runs parallel to the road, so this is kind of a back quadrant. The Region 12 is whipping all of their schools, and they are looking for support from the town to put solar in the backyard to offset some of their electrical needs and reduce their need for funding. So I, you know, we had talked about this two months ago or so. This is a lease agreement. So the solar panels would be as a lease, so the town is responsible because of the land. If they needed to remove them, they have the ability if by chance the region defaults.
So just for clarity, the terms of town support, that just means there's no financial component?
No, not at all. This is literally that we are giving their blessing to do that. I know that historic really doesn't have a say on it because it's a solar project that is exempt from that, so. Yeah, so it's just really just a lease for the school. We have to approve. I did get some information from Nicole, and I do have the lease agreements if you guys wanted to see them, but, you know, it seems pretty straightforward, and it's the right thing to do and we're in the right direction.
Yes, we went through that in June.
Correct.
And I had no problem with it. I thought it was a great idea.
They did, they were gonna wait for, just to finish up, because this was brought up in June, they were gonna wait for Chappag. They did not get Chappag. They're gonna do it as a separate project.
So they didn't get it, meaning they didn't get?
They didn't get it all as one lump sum, and they're gonna continue to work on that as a separate project. So.
I'll make a motion to support the solar project.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, perfect. Okay, next order of business, I guess we can go back to the agenda, Julie, is a resolution from HRA. Been a member for several years of the Husutonic Resources Recovery Authority. And, you know, I do go to all the meetings. Our alternate representative is actually Barbara Henry, and she's also been very, very active in it. The problem is, many of the other towns, because of the way their voting structure was, we get a big town such as Danbury, and they never show up to their meetings. It's hard to get a quorum, and it's hard to get anything approved. So what this is, this will do, and all the towns are going to be putting this resolution together, that it's one town, one vote. Because unfortunately with HRA, and so the smaller towns like us are the most active, it's tough to get bigger towns actually involved in some of the programs that they offer, let alone get a quorum to make decisions on moving forward with HRA. But I think they've been a great partner so far, and I think this is a great way for us as a town to have more of a voice. So I do support this, and I would be looking for your questions or comments to approve that or move forward with that.
So have all the other towns agreed to?
They all have agreed at the meeting, and then it's now for them to decide to bring it to all of their Board of Selectment or council in that case.
Yeah, so you need a motion.
I would love a motion if you'd like to, this is.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to accept the HRR, what is it?
Resolution?
Resolution for one town, one vote. I think that's a good way to say it, because that is the intent of this.
A second.
Perfect. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good to go. All right, okay, so the next topic became a lot more controversial than I thought it was going to be. We had gone ahead, and there's another whole story with the bids, but we started talking during the budget cycle about replacing the tennis courts right over here.
Well, we have to, right?
We have to. We have to. That's already in the budget. One of the things that I had actually talked about and proposed is there was a lot of interest in pickleball. People really wanted to play pickleball, so, you know, when we had talked about in the budget, you know, that was something that I actually assigned in, that it had to be double lined for pickleball and for tennis. On June 30th, The New York Times put an article about how pickleball isn't as nice as we had thought. There was another article in The Washington Post on July 26th. Just some of the things, there's, you know, nationwide scour of freight nerves and neighborly clashes. It's like having a pistol range in your backyard. This study actually shows that pickleball wax from 100 feet away could still be at 70 decibels. And, you know, it goes over some things with that, but the difference is, and why this is an important thing, is this, there's this hard pitch of a hard ball slamming, because it's like a wooden paddle.
Right.
I've never played it. I've watched it.
It's not tennis, which is the.
Yeah, because it's a net and it's a, so I went down, just because I had to go do some research of, because I just, it was so much news, and I was getting a lot of feedback. By the way, I do have letters from residents that are strongly opposed to this. So I went to Southbury, and I went to their pickleball court. They have pickleball courts. They're outside. It is a different sound than tennis. You hear that as they're hitting it.
Yeah.
And, you know, it wasn't something during the budget process until this was brought to me, and I had several people, right after the New York Times article came out, that contacted me and said, you can't let this happen to our town. You know, obviously, I'm big on quality of life for everybody that lives here, and, you know, not that pickleball is a bad game. I worry about it right here, because the neighbors that live next door have already expressed their concern that they they oppose it.
Yeah.
Just letting it go.
Where's the Southbury pickleball course located? Are they, is that Ballantyne?
It is Ballantyne. I think that was the name of it. You kind of go down Poverty Road, you take a left.
I grew up there, so that's why.
Is it just Old Field?
Yeah, it's on Old Field Road, right. And that's off the beaten path, so I can see why.
But is it just pickleball or is it a dual town's pickleball?
Well, their courts are just pickleball, so I was able to go and just listen to pickleball. You know, and Bridgewater is a bit, but there's not really people that live around it. You know, if it wasn't for the New York Times and The Washington Post articles, I would not have even known about it.
Yeah.
But I will say that it's a different sound.
That's a great point.
Completely. And if you live next door to it, and that sound carries, and I think it's the, and what these articles do, they talk about, you know, it's the pitch and the tone that makes the sound travel, and it's this popping sound you continue to hear. Yeah, I definitely value their concerns. You know, I think if we were going to do a pickleball court, it can be in someplace that's not nearly as popular, let's just say, and maybe not here, so.
Has somebody requested this?
I had definitely some people, and I still have people that are asking for it. You know, there's no question. But again, I think we look, need to look at the quality of life and what this meant, something that I didn't even, I'll be honest, didn't even consider until these, until these articles came out.
I've never even heard a game, so I don't know what it sounds like, but I can imagine, and I will do the same thing you did.
You know, we're no, in no rush on this. I mean, my recommendation is that if we move forward with tennis, that we remove the pickleball option on the request of our residents, which, you know, I'm not, again, not saying that pickleball isn't going to be an option in the future. If the residents agree, and we should have a vote on it, but I think we ought to vote on where it should be.
Yeah.
You know, because I don't want to destroy, just because somebody's outvoted in the town and somebody has to live next door to it. I don't think that's very fair, you know, so. Ideas, thoughts? What do you guys think?
I agree. I mean, I, you know, I'm just thinking about Wellers Bridge and the Rumble Strips, and I know that's coming up in another conversation, 67, but it's the whole idea of that repetitive sound.
Correct.
That becomes, you know, you're gonna drive yourself crazy just listening to it all the time. And the tennis courts have been there so long, and that's never been an issue.
Correct. People love them. We know that people love them.
Vibration.
Completely different sport.
Yeah.
You know, I was hoping to kind of kill two birds with one stone. We had good intentions in mind. Unfortunately, that didn't quite play out like that, so. Did you guys want to, and I could leave this open for another month, and we can talk about it if you guys want to go visit some pickleball?
No.
Or if you want, well, I mean, if you want to do your own research, I mean, this is our time to talk about these things, so.
Plenty of places to play.
Okay.
Yeah, it's really fine. And I don't know that this is, is this anything we can vote on?
No, no, no.
It's just about putting lines in or not putting lines in.
Correct, correct.
And the tennis court has been very expensive to keep up. And three, I'm not gonna be in favor of building a pickleball court, because for a town of 2,000 people and we want to keep taxes low, and it's not so much the building, it's the maintenance, and we all know, a great tennis court has been expensive.
They, they are. You reach a point where you can't just keep fixing them.
You keep things the same.
All right. Well, I'm gonna say I'm not taking it off the table in the future.
Right.
But as far as keeping it downtown, I'm, I'm gonna, I'll leave, I'll make the motion that just not do pickleball at tennis courts here.
That's fine. I'll second that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Okay. Don't pick a ball. Perfect. Okay, so next on the agenda is Squire Road. I know we have some people from that road. And I just wanted to start with an explanation of how this, how this happened. I had received a letter from, a petition from several people on the road. Resident squires on Squire Road have expressed grave concerns to Roxbury elected officials about menacing traffic for a long time. In the years since Squire Road was repaved, it's become a cut through for locals and for commuters avoiding congestion on I-84. It is our lived experience confirmed by systematic observations by concerned residents that the speed and volume of traffic in our neighborhood was a unique configuration, Squire Road. The speed of cars, trucks and vehicles towing oversized cargo like boats poses unacceptable danger. Pedestrians, dog walkers, children, cyclists, and drivers exiting driveways on Squire Road are especially vulnerable. There are 26 residences on Squire Road. You know, a lot of them are very close to the road. So one thing where I have to go with this, there was a couple of things. It was, you know, definitely the, the speed of the road. They also had a recommendation to put a stop sign at the intersection of Apple Lane on Squire Road, so creating a three-way stop would be the thing. So I contacted the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation Office of the State Traffic Administration, which is called ASTA. That's who sets these, you know, speed limits for us. They talked a little bit about the road, the traffic volume and PC data indicated average daily traffic volumes of approximately 450 vehicles per day. Their traffic study said that they have an average of 27 miles per hour. The analysts of the latest available three-year crash experience from 2000, January 1st, 2022, revealed one reported crash. The speed limit study was conducted based on roadway geometry characteristic, trail runs, ball bank testing, crash experience, and engineering judgment. Hor horizontal curvatures of the road was evaluated based on the ball bank testing to determine the need for appropriate warning signals. A series of curves near the westerly end of Squire Road could not be driven comfortably at the existing 30 miles an hour, but the curves are currently signed with winding road warning signs, which they feel is adequate for that. Considering all of the above, there's determination, the previously approved 30 mile an hour speed limit is considered appropriate, and no changes are warranted at this time. Analysis using the US Limit 2 Computer System provided by the Federal Highway Administration affirmed that the existing 30 mile an hour speed limit is appropriate. They also made a series of other observations and discoveries. They did say that that's the single white, or the single yellow line is not allowed, so if we reseal that in any way, we're not gonna put it back. The signage, they're saying that because we have no trucks sign, they should be no true truck sign. There's a hidden driveway sign that's not approved. And additionally, they did say that the stop sign is not recommended. And they discovered that Apple Lane from Brophy to Squire was approved for 30, not 25, so they actually wanted to change that to go higher. So I would say this is definitely not, you know, what the people of the road want to hear, what I was expecting from, you know, this traffic investigation. They do set the limits, so.
Really? I'm not familiar with that. We own the road, but they.
They, they, they do that, yeah. That's what they do.
I can't speak, but that's not correct.
It's up to you, guys.
No.
Okay. You got it. You got it. No problem, and I'll tell you what, if you don't have all our email addresses, I will get them for you at the end of the meeting, so you can send us an email, so we can talk about this again. And let's, no, but I'm just saying, if somebody wanted to do that, I would absolutely provide them. But this is, this is the results of the study that we got, you know, good or bad or indifferent. This is where, where we are, so. I'll tell you what, we're gonna, we're gonna leave it on for another month for discussion, and let's look for feedback. How about that?
Perfect.
Of course, of course. This isn't a topic that we have to stop talking about now, just like most of these things. We're gonna continue this conversation. All right, so we'll just kind of keep going with that. All right, so it is August, so the next thing on the line on the agenda is the center line rumble strips on Route 67. This is obviously a topic for, that is near and dear to my heart, because I don't particularly care for the rumble strips, and because we had so much feedback on Wellers Bridge, I definitely, you know, supporting our town and listening to the people of our town, I'm completely opposed to this. So I did schedule a virtual public information meeting. It's a public forum. It's going to be a live stream, and where it's going to be a chance for question, answer, so I'm gonna start.
With the state, right?
This is with the state, so I'm gonna start advertising this in the next newsletter. This is Thursday, August 24th at 6:00 PM. So if you live on 67 or you're concerned about it, the rumble strips, they are loud, they are noisy, and I would love your support if you'd like to be on that call, or have the information to register online.
Are they shoving this down our throat?
They kind of are. They, they've got it. They've got the funding. They've got everything, and I'll just, I'll just say this to confirm with your office scheduling for a virtual public information meeting presented by the Connecticut Department of Transportation concerning subject product, this meeting, blah, blah, blah. They're, they're going to explain why it is. It's for head, you know, head-on collisions, people crossing the median, it makes it safer.
How many of those have we had?
It's people running off the road. It's not head-on collision. Correct, correct.
Center of town.
Correct. And we know when people are going.
At least not do it in the center of town.
Well, you don't have to allow it at all.
Right.
Well, they can't shove it down.
They can, we can put up a big stink, and that's why I'm asking for, you know, the same voices that were, that were loud before. But, you know, I don't want to put them on 317. I don't want them on 67. I just don't think that they are good for the quality of life. Once again, if you live next to those and you have to hear it, it's every time somebody's cutting a corner.
No, and that's the point. I mean, they haven't spent the time or money to widen that section down by Century Hill. They are avoiding that at all costs.
To continue to get knows on moving that bridge, widening that bridge. I think it's ridiculous and
Crazy.
And if you did that over there, it's gonna be hard to not hit those, and again, just ruining the lives of people around us.
The trucks going through there, they can't, there's no shoulder. There's nowhere for them to go.
Absolutely. So I'm just gonna ask for everybody's support on that. If you're interested in this town and you want to keep it the way it is, let's, let's let our voices be heard on Thursday, August 24th at 6:00 PM.
Have we asked our state reps to get the phone?
I have not, because I went right through DOT.
For us, the DLP will run you over. Everybody deals with them knows that.
I think Roxbury could be pretty loud.
I, I feel that.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, Russ.
Yep, I can do that. Okay, so that's just, really just for information and hopefully some support. Another topic that had been brought up, I've been making complaints about this for quite some time, and I just wanted you guys to be aware that they're finally fixing 67 between Transylvania and Bronson Mountain, where the road is literally breaking away. So if you head down 67, head toward Southbury, right around, oh, that area right there, just after you pass Transylvania Road. I forgot I had a picture for that one. Thank you, Julie. So you could literally, if you're following, I was following a triax, and when you just see the whole thing lean over, it looks like it's gonna fall over.
It's really, especially after the rain.
It's getting considerably worse. You could see the, literally, the road is falling around. It's that side, so they have multiple things that they're gonna do, but they want to put some kind of retention here to keep the road from washing away, because that's what's actually happening. The road is sinking. There's no question. So I've been complaining for a while, so that did make its way to Department of Transportation. It's really just for information. They have to fix it. They're not even sure which way. They have two alternatives for, for solving the problem. But just to be expected that they're gonna be ripping up that road, and finally, you know, I know that I've gotten a lot of complaints over the last year for that, so that was nice to, well, nice to have. Okay, we'll go back to the agenda. Okay, so we do have Roxbury Volunteer Fire Department here. Do we have a picture for that?
Do.
Yes, please.
That wasn't that then, Mark, or was that? Hi, guys. For the record, I'm Sarah Laurette, and I'm the chief of the ambulance, and with me is members Erin Hodge and Kay Collins. The ambulance has been looking to put all of our assets under one roof for, I think, since 2007. We've been exploring different options. We've been weighing different opportunities, and, and we've come to the conclusion that our best thing at this particular time that meets our current needs, meets the immediate needs of the future of both the ambulance and of the fire department, is to put on an addition of two double-deep bays on the existing fire department. Currently, this addition would consist of, as I said, the two double-deep bays, as pictured there on the left, as well as storage rooms and an office/radio room, as well as a work area. Currently, the ambulance that we're in right now is on this side of the firehouse over here. Not pictured in this particular part of the drawing, but we can't even walk around our ambulance while it's in the garage. The space is so tight. So this would be a wider bay that would enable, as I said, all of our equipment and vehicles under one roof. We're currently spread all over town. We have, and we have two ambulances, a pickup truck that we use during the winter storms, or to take the training, or to go to rehab calls, where we go and rehab the firemen on long long fire events or standbys, things like that. And then we also have a rehab trailer. The rehab trailer is currently stored at the town garage. The pickup truck is parked outside of the firehouse right now. And our second ambulance, which we do use quite often, unfortunately, either as a second call, simultaneous second call, or when one of our ambulances is getting service, we always have one in town. That is currently housed at the old firehouse at 38 Church Street, which is the, the building next to David Peters, his garage, and then the old firehouse across from the Catholic church there. So the idea would be for us to vacate the bay that we're currently in, vacate the space where we're in, in the old firehouse, turn those over to the fire department, return them to their space. And then we would put all of our equipment in this one spot. Right now, we, in terms of storage, we do have an office upstairs with some limited storage in the firehouse right now. We are in need of more storage. All we have is a tiny closet in the bay that doesn't fit everything. So this would meet our storage needs as well as a work area. And again, the immediate needs of the department. It's a pretty simple, straightforward addition. It doesn't have water. It's simply straightforward adding on, and in the future.
You don't need a bathroom?
I was gonna say.
No, because there's two bathrooms. There's bathrooms already.
Okay.
There's not living quarters. This is not, this is simply just.
The space you're in, did we, did we build that, or did you move into a part of the fire?
No, we've just always been a stepchild to them. I mean, they graciously accept us, but.
We didn't add on to where you are now. I thought we did.
No, that was always part of the initial firehouse, and the ambulances were smaller when it was built, so it, it fit the need at the time in the 70s.
Cause I see a hill going down.
There is. It's, we have, we've had plans drawn up by an engineer, which we've, the ambulance is paid for ahead of time. Currently. Currently, you know, I talked about the ambulance being barely able to fit, we're not able to work around it, we have to pull it out in the cold weather, etcetera, to restock it. We have small storage space. There's a dirt floor over at the old firehouse where we're experiencing some mice damage, unfortunately. The overhead door is extremely heavy to open, you have to do it manually. We do heat it, the ambulance pays for the heat there. What'd you say?
It's not insulated.
Yeah, not insulated, it feels quite expensive.
Did we put in the above ground?
Yes, it's in the back. Yeah, that's not, that's, yeah, it's in the back of it.
I thought one was pulled.
Yes, it got pulled.
Get away with heat.
There's no parking over there, there's limited lighting, so that really is just, it works for, you know.
It works for nineteen fifty.
Yes, very, that's very well said. Currently, our pickup truck has got such severe mice damage that we have to replace the entire headliner and all of everything because it just got, I won't even go there.
Our emergency trailer too.
Yes, and the trailer down, it's the, yep. We've had to put everything into plastic bins. We've tried to insulate that trailer with spray foam. I mean, we've, we've tried to eradicate them, and they're just determined. So this would, is simple, straightforward, puts everything under one roof, keeps the assets from getting damaged in any way. The pickup truck being under there, that's so important in the winter. Not having the ice or the snow ready to go. Same with the trailer and the other ambulance, so.
Is there a second floor to that?
To this? No. There is not at this time.
Can there be?
You'd have to take the roof off if you wanted to.
Alright, I couldn't.
They're considering a trust construction.
Oh, alright.
Just, just.
Yeah. To do a second floor is outrageous money, requires an elevator, doesn't meet our needs. Don't, we don't need, we just need a roof and all four things there.
So they met last week, and obviously I'm excited and supportive, I think this is a great option. My big thing was, is that enough room? You know, I wanna make sure.
Well, I'm looking at that too, and wondering if there's enough room between, you know, the width of that with.
It's great, I mean, you gotta think our regular fire trucks go on that right side, and I mean, there's more than a flank. So this is actually, so you can get that pickup truck, so you can get that utility trailer, you can have both ambulances. You have one place to report. And I just wanna say, because I had mentioned it when they were there, now that I listen to the radio all the time. Those tones go off, and in like the last week and a half, we've had twice where there were two ambulance calls basically at the same time. They both happened to be, I didn't realize this, that they were both on Cardinal or caraged in three seventeen, and then the next time it was the same thing. But honestly, as soon as you get that second call, people just start to like calling it, I'm there, I'm there, firehouse or wherever they're gonna go to. Just, everybody chips in, and I just, I think our ambulance does an amazing, amazing job, and I just wanna thank you guys. Great, great job.
So what do you need from us?
Yeah. Well, we do have the plans drawn up. We would like support from the board to endorse this proposal. We would like for the town to put forth, we've gotten bids, but that was pre-COVID, etcetera, etcetera. So we'd like the town to put out a request for a proposal through their sources based on these plans. Has to figure out the cost of what it would entail to do this based on these plans. The ambulance is willing to put forth some cash of our own and then figure out what it costs and go from there.
Yep, we still don't, we still don't have prices, we don't know where we are on that, so I think that's.
No, I have pre-COVID numbers and they're so unrealistic.
Right, everything went up.
Wood, materials.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, do you wanna say anything?
No, I mean, we talked to Patrick about it, and he said he would like to do, us to do some type of a fundraiser. Washington did, and we had a lot of people that came forth with the car show that said that they're looking for something to support, so this is.
Yeah, the time, yes.
Getting those out of help.
Right. Yeah, so we're not out with our, you know, we're not here coming asking for money right now. We would just like you to put forth the proposal so we can figure out what kind of money we're talking about.
Absolutely. We can do that, let's move forward.
The last thing I wanna say is that if in the future of Roxbury, which none of us know, if the town were to purchase a long ladder truck for the fire department, if they needed that, this would fit that. That's why it fits both our needs, because then we could put a truck there and then move over to their bay. In addition, us vacating their space allows them to put their pickup truck in the ambulance bay where it is now, instead of it sitting outside. And allows them to have more storage at the old firehouse. So it's a win-win for both departments. And it's pretty simple, we're not asking for anything extravagant, just basic construction, a basic under one roof.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Timeline, we're looking hopefully within next year.
Yes, I'd like to break ground in maybe a year. Yeah, like go through the next budget price, budget cycle after we know costs in our fundraising, and then maybe break ground in a year or so.
Sounds fantastic.
That's our thoughts.
Why would we need a long ladder truck?
We, I'm not saying we do. No, no, they're not asking for one, there's nothing in the plan. I'm just, I'm just saying if.
It's a flexible space.
Correct.
It's, it's a flexible.
That's right, it will continue to meet the needs of both departments, moving forward, yes. No one's buying a ladder truck. Okay, that's not even on there.
Got a tree, got a tree.
Okay, so we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much. We'll have to get more information, finalize the plans.
Absolutely.
I might even need to talk to the guy that did the plans in Florence, he's still willing to work with it. We'll put together a bid, and I'm gonna talk about that coming up for bid later.
Great. Absolutely, well, we appreciate it.
Looking forward to working with you guys.
Alright, thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so next thing on our agenda is July sixteenth.
Yeah.
July sixteenth was a crazy, a crazy day. We, from all accounts, three and a half inches of rain in Roxbury in one hour. We had pretty much catastrophic damage on a lot of roads. Booth Road, Old Roxbury, Flag Swamp had some damage, Judd's Bridge, Battle Swamp, Minor Bridge had washout.
Don't forget Garnet.
Bossard Hill, Garnet, I mean, it keeps going. We had actual roads blown out at Squire, Hemlock, Wellen, and most of Grassy Hill with trenches in excess of four feet deep, just from the runoff.
What did we do to fix Grassy Hill? We just.
Well, it's funny you say that, because we were ready to do Bacon Road that Monday, the next day. So now that pipe is going up to Grassy Hill, because actually Bacon Road did pretty well through that whole thing. So we're not gonna put it back the way it is, wait for something to happen.
Right.
We're gonna, we bought some things, we're waiting to see. Now, I filled out a whole bunch of FEMA declarations on all of these projects, this is actually the master list that I used. We are still waiting to hear, because it's all done by region, so basically Litchfield County, we're gonna see if we can get a FEMA declaration. If that happens, not only will the town, it'll be released funds for the town, but also individuals. Just about everybody on Church Street, on the north side of Church Street, had significant damage of the river washing away. Literally water just flooding into people's basements, just tons of damage. And, you know, there's a lot of property damage in general. If this becomes a declared event, and it may be weeks before we know this, then that's gonna open up those.
And those people might not have flood insurance, but they should, because it's in a.
Yeah, wasn't there a problem?
Yeah. Some of the things, they've been denied because it didn't affect the house, but it removed everything on the outside. Another one was denied for different reasons. One that had like a foot of water in their basement was told that the basement would have had to be filled for it to qualify. It has to touch the living space. Insurance companies are just crazy, so part of that process of going through FEMA is they're gonna take over where your insurance failed. So your insurance has to kick in first, and then FEMA comes in. So I've already told them, like, if your insurance, this company is telling you no, get a letter saying that they're telling you no, so that way they can move ahead with the FEMA project once that gets released. No culverts completely let go, but we had, you know, the washouts on Hemlock.
Like the church has a bridge.
The only private bridge was the walking bridge by, by, it comes house, if you know where that is, almost down by Maple Bank.
That ended up on the.
Down by the church.
Church.
Church. But if, you know, like everything, and one thing that I, once we saw the flooding going on and Church Street and the culvert that we had done actually held together, there was a little washout damage on the bottom, but for the most part, the buildings that we built were great. So we started chasing the river down, because I didn't want to start backing up at any bridge. So we went over to here to Shallowbees, went down to Hemlock, and that's where we discovered. You know, the pipes were working, it's a six-foot culvert down on Hemlock, and it was solid water. It was just, nothing blocking it. It was just so much volume and such. It was crazy. And then we went to Botsford. So it's, right now, we're looking at it at about eighty-eight thousand dollars. We're gonna go through four hundred tons of processed, just filling holes. It's, you know, let alone road damage, patch damage. We've hired external contractors. The day of the event, I got it handed to earth artists and McWinn, Brandon McWinn, for just literally going to get their machines and start to take the logs out of the river behind Church Street to just let that water start to subside. And that was just a quick, yeah, I'll go get my truck. They just jumped right in, the fire department did an amazing job. They did some pump outs of some basements as well, but just everybody kinda pulled together before long it was done.
They had individual neighbors too who just pulled their machines out and started doing.
Yeah, yeah, I will say somebody that's in the room, and I wanna thank him very much for, because there were logs and rocks and everything else on Red River Lily Preserve is on three seventeen. So I thank our residents of Roxbury that jumped right in there, and I really appreciate it. It was, it was a lot of, there was a lot of damage. This is, you know, it's kinda the same as the eight inches we got two years ago. Both were epic storms. The day after, the Governor Lamont called the rain biblical. And I think that's a, that's a good thing, but we will be working for weeks to get Grassy Hill. We'll put in the eighteen-inch pipes that we were gonna use on Bacon, we're just gonna line that road. We have seven culverts going in. Because that night, Sunday, and I will say, Public Works, just everybody jumped together. We didn't leave until everybody could get out of their driveway. We had to rebuild so many driveways where it was just, they couldn't get out, they couldn't get in, we needed the ambulances to go. So nobody left Sunday until everybody could get in and out of their driveway. There was a lot of areas that we had combed off, we still have combed off. Because there's just not enough crew to get through the amount of work that's going on. When you see Public Works, just give them a pat on the back, because they're doing an amazing, amazing, amazing job. I could even see that the stress was kinda getting to them last week, because there's just an amount of work that we.
Right, and this is in addition to the stuff that they.
A lot of the, the normal maintenance stuff just can't get done. We are still going to be in repair mode for quite some time. And I only expect this eighty-eight thousand to grow. But we're gonna kinda keep moving in the right direction, and I will keep you posted if we get any kind of funding at all, not only for our residents, but for the town.
When will Bacon be done? Cause those culverts are rusted.
I understand that.
Yeah, but they did hold up during the storm, which is now not a, not the top of the list, but still.
But that's gonna be done after this, we still have to do that.
No, structurally, I'm worried.
Absolutely.
Priority, so, so that's what we're up against now.
I have a recommendation, only because, you know, we all know what's taking place and how much work there is, but I think residents don't all know. You know, they think that this can be fixed in a rather quick timeframe, so maybe, I don't know if the email newsletter is enough, but maybe in the future, sometime during that next week, maybe a phone call for those who don't get the email. You know, where they just have the landline or whatever, just to say we are aware that there's a lot of work to be done, or you haven't been forgotten, etcetera. But I just think, just, I think part of our job is to reassure people, you know, it's yes to get all. Yes, to communicate, get the dub, but to reassure that we haven't forgotten, that we know, because we haven't. But it's, you know, we just can't forget to just say it.
I'll start thinking about something to put out, or even a voicemail or something.
Yeah, I think that might reach more people.
For the most part, people have been very, very understanding now that we're two weeks out, I think, a little bit. Well, I mean, we just got to Garnet yesterday, you know, and it's, there's still so much more to go, because nothing's a quick fix. You have to get the grader in there, you gotta get material in there, you gotta get the backhoe in there. And then we're not working on Grassy Hill where there's giant caverns in the road. So it's, it became prioritization, what was the biggest first, the most safety hazard first. But they are not gonna stop until we get there. I'm hoping by our next meeting, we'll start getting through this list, get back to regular maintenance.
You know, the thing is too, that this is, I mean, this is like the new norm, storms coming through.
That's a very scary thing.
It is.
Conversations I keep having, like, this, this, this may be, that is, our infrastructure isn't made to handle it. We're gonna continue putting the pieces together, moving forward, and it's gonna mean, you know, changes in engineering for that matter, to handle more. I will say that, you know, one thing that I'm gonna work on with the state, and I haven't gotten any ground with it because it was just brought up to me. But one of the residents on Church Street had mentioned that if the water from three seventeen and basically everything on the south side of the road that runs into three seventeen, if there was, you know, instead of just culverts dumping into that stream, if it was able to pull the water like a sewer system down to a lower spot along the river, like Pearlwood Bridge, to get it away from that, you wouldn't have that, all of that water going through, and it might alleviate some of that. I thought that was a great idea. I love it, I love it when people come with.
It's a flood plain.
Right.
Understood.
Groundwater tables a foot below, so it's almost done like that, you have groundwater coming up.
Right.
So you need curtain drains, I think D O T knows the solution, but it's an elaborate, expensive one.
The other thing that came up, and I think you showed me a picture of this, a video, somebody had put in a stone wall. But it was a solid stone wall, and it actually diverted all the water, created a river. So people aren't really thinking about how water is permeating through in its natural direction, and they're changing the direction by the objects that they put in.
That happened on several areas. They created a pond or a waterway that caused more erosion. And we've seen that along many roads, and I know they're beautiful, the rock walls, but if they're not allowing water to pass through.
These are solid.
Literally created a dam.
Yeah, right, because they're not just drywall, you know, it's cement and solid.
Holding it together.
Yes, the drywall allows it to go through, but the other.
So we have a couple of roads and some residents that I have to speak to also. Like I said, so far, everybody's very understanding, so they get it, they get it. Okay, so I will keep you posted. Alright, we did have four bids go out this month with the new budget. We had one for tennis courts, underground storage tanks, and then we had two on bridges. Unfortunately, none of them came in at budget quite over. As a matter of fact, we had three budgets, three for the tennis courts, one for the underground storage tank, two for Shallowbees over Fenbrook, and one over for Wakeley Road over Battle Swamp. Something that I learned a little bit more, not only there's all over budget, I don't feel that I got the response that I should have. So I would like to propose that I throw the bids out. There's only one that came into budget that I'd like to keep, and that's Shallowbees over Fenbrook, which is, there's one for forty-four and one for ninety, that does fall within budget. But I would like to put this on the C T Source site, which is the state Connecticut bidding site, to get more response, to get.
A broader.
Yeah, I would like to.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Something forward.
Shallowbees.
Okay, so for Shallowbees, we're forty-four thousand, I'd like to go with that. Are we all in agreement?
Yes.
I gotta use more advertising.
Well, where do we, where do we put our bids?
That's it. Yeah, that's all we did. So we gotta move, so this C T Source, I started doing more information, and now I get a thousand emails a day. Just everybody puts everything out in bid, now we're getting all these, and I'm really realizing that's, that's the voice that you need to get a lot of bids that come in. There were good bids, I thank the people for doing it, but I will notify them, go back out, and I'm gonna change the pickleball.
And you only got ones good on the ground storage thing?
Yeah.
Who was the company you sent?
Yeah, I'll go over with you later. I go over with you later, I got the bid actually. Yeah, I'll go over with you later. I go over with you later. I got the bid actually in my office.
There's a lot of tank.
I know, that was a. Yeah, I think that's what it was.
We're pulling two tanks, right? Replace it with above ground.
Above ground, so the diesel tank and the heating oil tank is coming out. We're gonna replace it with a, a split tank, six thousand gallon tank, four thousand diesel, two thousand unleaded, and then our existing five hundred gallon tank will be repurposed as heating oil for Public Works. Three thirty-three, four hundred. So we're gonna go back up.
Yeah, I know, that's crazy.
You did hear me right, three hundred and thirty-three, four.
Wow, that's crazy.
So it's gonna be another month before they have the answers for that, but I will keep you posted.
Yeah, when do those tanks have to be out of the ground? This, we still have a couple of years?
We had some time. It's because we got the pavement as a grant that I'd like to get him done, so we don't have to rip it up after.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, so next order of bid business is the Hodge Park. So we've had some issues with Hodge Park, definitely to say. Can you pull that up? There you go. Okay, so this had come up before, there was always a question. I have to kind of scroll down, it's the picture I need.
So we own the shore, but it's landlocked. In other words, the state.
So this is what we didn't know last year. So I had T. Michael Alex go out and it's not that we needed another map. This is where that pull off is. It's we needed to know where this point where it was. We didn't know where this point was and overall speculation was this fell in the middle of where the pull off, where the picnic tables are. If you're driving around on sixty-seven and you go over the bridge, before you get to the main pull off, there is a small pull off. You can just pull over to the side of the road.
You barely get the car off the side.
Yeah, it's just a small little pull off. And if you look to your right, that's the location of that orange peg.
So where the problem is, is in our property, it's state.
We don't have any. So I had a, a meeting on July seventh, and I'd actually like to ask Donna, do you want to come on up? This is for, she's our representative from Newtown Health District. So we had had some concerns on the river, also some pollutants in the river. And we wanted to have a meeting to kind of get to the bottom of it. I had known this information, but you know, we really didn't know what to do with it at that point. And then now this situation, you know, caused us to discuss it. When we had met with Representative from the DOT, his name is Ron Ferris. He instructed us that we could no longer enforce anything on that property. We can no longer enforce anything on that property. It's not Roxbury Town land and we can't give anybody a ticket to do anything. He said it's state property. I, I would agree. The next thing I said, so what are, what are our options? Because I do think it's a great place. We would have to go through a procedure to lease the property from the state. A minimum release, lease rental of seventy-five dollars a month. But the bigger thing is, we'd have to carry insurance of a one million and a aggregate limit of two million policy per year. So we would take responsibility if we decided to lease it.
I don't want to do that.
So, did you want to add anything to our discussions or anything? Donna, you are our partner in the Newtown Health District and I thank you. You have been nothing but supportive on every situation that I've ever brought to you and I just want that to go, thank you.
So, you know, historically, I have eaten a sandwich at a picnic table in my years of life. And it's a really nice spot and, you know, I'm not here all the time. I'm, I'm not here on the weekends, so I don't see what happens. I know that almost all natural areas tend to get busier on weekends because people have time off. So it's, so for me, from a local public health perspective, if we're gonna have a place where people are be passively encouraged to congregate recreationally, then somebody has to own it. Like somebody has to take responsibility for maintaining it, monitoring it. So it really comes down to for whoever owns it or is responsible for it to kind of make some decisions about what they want it to be, what it should look like, because I think, you know, if we were starting anew, right now, we would say if, if the town were to be able to maintain, if they were to enter into a lease with the state, what do you want that to look like? How do you want people to use it? You need to create a capacity. You need to be able to monitor or limit access so that it doesn't become, create a safety issue, both from parking, how many people are there, how they're using it, that there's not facilities for people who stay there for a long period of time. You could do something that's a, I would think maybe a compromise. I don't know how how easy or effective it would be to do it, to say it should be what we always thought of it. It's a stopover where people can stop, have their lunch, keep going on their way.
It's a wayside.
Yeah, but then you have to, then you would have to enforce that, let's say it's one hour park. Someone has to make sure it's one hour park. And I don't know how you, you'd have to assign someone to be responsible for that. And you'd also have to have like capacity, like how many cars could be there? How many people could be there?
We can't do anything. I mean, it's like the state of Connecticut should be making these decisions now.
By the sound of it, the access is the state of Connecticut, right? So for people to come onto the property, they're on the state of Connecticut property. And then there comes a line where it becomes the town of Roxbury.
It's, okay, so that, just for the record. Our line is way up. It is. Where we had originally thought, and that's where I was explaining, we thought this kind of fell like along the beach line. But it's not. The beach line is over here.
So then the state of Connecticut owns right to the.
That's why Ron said that during our meeting, that the only way we could regulate it or do anything, but then again, now to finish that conversation, if did regulate it, now we gotta supply a bathroom to that, so we'll have to put a porta potty there. We're gonna have to maintain it in order to be.
And you need to anchor it, so no one tips it over. I mean, I'm just saying. If there's not people around, people, there are people who like to cause trouble and I've seen. So that would have to be anchored. It just would have to be secured if that was.
But this is a state of Connecticut problem. They're not enforcing.
They, they didn't maintain it in the first place. That's how come this conversation came up last year. When I was talking to Patrick from Newtown, from New Milford DOT, they're responsible for that over there. And they said, well, we have no plan to, to do it. So, you know, we told Bridgewater they can just do whatever they want and they can monitor it themselves. And he was easy to say that the DOT was not. That's where the situation changed during our conversation on July seventh.
Bridgewater, you mean, the other?
Yeah, Bridgewater would maintain the state pull offs, I believe, the one on Leewonka. And stuff like that.
Well, for us, we would have to lease it.
We would have to lease it, correct.
So all the signs we have up there are not legal.
So I wanted to bring this information to the board, because I will have to take down that sign if we, you know, no matter what we do, I have to take that side.
Right, because it's currently not legal.
We're gonna have to rely on the state, but again, are they gonna, I mean, anybody can then use it. That's gonna be the state decision, not ours.
Well, I think you kind of have to put it on the state to say, we're, we, I mean, the collective we of the town, we are not in a position where we can regulate it. State is yours, you should be regulating it. What are you gonna do about it? Like, I think you kind of have to put it on them to say, what are they willing to do or not do?
There's so many safety issues. There's traffic, there's people drowning, there's, they're pooping all over the place because they really shouldn't be there for the purpose that they're there. I feel sorry for those people. I know what happens, once pond closes, they're looking for a place to go. But Bull's Bridge in Kent, they gotta shut that down because they, they just trashed the place. And go to the bathroom on people's properties. So I was hoping the town could have enforcement, but we can't. So they have us. We're in a catch twenty-two.
Right, it's too much. Yeah, we're just not gonna be able to enforce.
It's affecting our residents, but we have no power. Hopefully, we have a DOT assessment.
I mean, but I, I will say that, even from a mowing standpoint, we cannot, we have to go out there and mow three seventeen because you can't see, there's no sight lines coming out of like the top of it and everything. If we were to wait for the state, it would never get done. So we end up having to do it because they're always, oh, we'll get to it, we'll get to it.
State reps and the DOT in the same room.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea before we go any farther. Because I think you're right. I mean, really, it's, you know, what, we go back to them and say, what are you going to do? And we need some commitment from them. It's, because personally, I'm not really interested in having Roxbury take liability and have to take out a two million dollar policy, you know, with, you know, if someone drowns or, I mean, that's just, that's just a lot on the town and we can't, we, you know, this is a small community and we don't have the manpower to put someone there.
When I thought I had power, it was a council. You go down there, there's thirty people there. I'm not putting my life at risk to say, hey, you all gotta leave. You'll find me floating down the river. No, so it is a state problem and they're putting it on us, but we have to see it and deal with it. It's our residents that are directly impacted by what's going on.
Well, now we understand that, you know, who owns it and the separation there, which is important because we didn't have that information.
I mean, we, you could, we could try having that conversation with the DOT about what can be done here. What's possible? Because if nothing's possible and they're not, and if, and if they'll say on the record that they're not gonna do anything, and then we can cite a nuisance, then we can cite state. You're not doing your job. It's a problem down there. What are you gonna do about it? But I mean, I think before you get to that extreme. Let's see if we can get something. Like first, I'm always a believer, let's try to negotiate, let's, let's think about what we want. And then let's see if we can get either something that we want or something close.
What I want is a way, with a wayside, that if two cars want to park, have a picnic and leave.
Exactly.
And not really make it a town park. You don't want to shut people out.
Really not a park. It's a wayside.
It is, and that's.
Different FedEx guy or whoever, mechanic or whatever, and I just see a guy sitting there at the, because I'll go around that way, just check it out. And I, I mean, that's exactly what it was meant for.
But we need to get it back to what it was.
All right.
Well, I think the only way you can get to that, like the stopover, is putting a time limit on it, like, like you're saying, like an hour parking, like. But then someone has to enforce it. I mean, so people have to know that that's what it is. There are no facilities. And again, who owns that? Who owns that decision? Like, that's, I, you know, part of it is, what do we want it to be? What are we willing, what can we do? And then who's gonna be able to make it happen?
Right, because a sign will go up, but it still has to be enforced.
It has to be enforced. It has to be enforced.
Well, it would be enforced, but we could enforce it, but we can't. What the state has set to us, you want to take care of it? Waste it. Pay eight hundred dollars a year and take care of all our problems.
All our problems. That's kind of literally how I feel about this. Shed responsibility on the state level. I mean, they, they said that about Baker Road, that well, the town can go in and start clearing out some of the walls. No, we're not gonna take on the responsibility from the state. I don't want that.
So we need to get our state senator and state rep in the same room and talk to them about the tourism.
Yes, right. Exactly.
Ruffle strips and waysides.
It was both the state, so.
Absolutely. Oh, it is, absolutely. All right, anything else to talk to?
We really can't. We've said no to everybody.
Okay, anything else?
I'm, I'm more than willing to be involved in any, like I said, if we can document a problem, the health department can help. It's just one of those things, where's the begin and end and, and and if, you know, I, I want to, don't want to use a hammer on the state if we can get something from the state. But if they're, if they're gonna be completely uncooperative and just, then, then we kind of have to hold them.
Yep, understood. Okay, well, this is definitely not a conversation that's done.
Best way to handle is let the state rep schedule.
Correct, okay. Got it. Start setting that up tomorrow. I'll keep you guys posted. And we'll do a special meeting when we need to. Donna, I'll keep you informed. Okay, next topic, is that good? Just budget capital. Obviously, Bacon Road culverts are on hold hopefully for only about one month. When it got to Minor Bridge, they were, finally got, gave me a start date about a week and a half ago and it was the week before the Bridgewater Fair. They wanted to start it on. I know, they wanted to start it on August fourteenth. The Bridgewater Fair is the eighteenth, nineteenth, twentieth. So I literally had to do like an addendum and we had to agree on a new end date, so we pushed back the date on both ends, so the beginning and the end. So now they're not starting till day after Bridgewater Fair is over. I got a lot of calls on that and now the estimated end date is now eleven two. I thought that was, that's, there's too much traffic that goes down Minor Bridge during that fair. Obviously, Wakeley, we're gonna rebid. Shallabees were go ahead, holding off on the fence at Hurlberg Park, but that did come in and we're gonna be building a new roof over that. Currently, I'm collecting bids on re-tiling the bathrooms. We have four bathrooms. That's been a project that's kind of been on the plate for a couple of years, so now that the kitchen's done, that's our next project.
Here in the town hall.
Here in the town hall. There's two bathrooms upstairs, two bathrooms downstairs.
And this was approved years ago, right?
Before we were in office. I was on board of finance when that happened.
No, no, I just want to make sure that that's been a yes for a while. Just want to make sure we're not outspending a bunch of money.
No, no, this, I'm just trying to get your to-do list done, thanks. And not for nothing, there's a lot of bridges and road repairs and things. There was a lot of bridges that were never looked at and I'm just saying, there's a lot, we're going through all of them and and I don't mind doing it, but. Doing a great job. Yeah, and we know stuff has to be done.
That's how bad it is. You said it could wait a few years. This is decades.
For the record, it did hold up during this storm, just saying. All right, so onto Public Works. The electrical is all completed in the pole barn. Excited about it. We already have the lights, just gotta hook them up. The next is to reframe the doors, start to enclose it. One other thing from a town hall perspective, you know, HR was on our list for a long time last year. All our job descriptions done. Employee handbook is done with code about ethics and accountability. Kind of breeze through it and we're gonna be presenting it at our next staff meeting in two weeks. So now everybody's gonna have a job description, everybody's gonna have a policy manual. We've been working on it for, well, Sarah's been doing great with it, but obviously about six months. I think we started it in January, so maybe seven months at this point, but I couldn't be any happier.
Yeah, well done.
Yeah, I know, we need to get the HR side of this up to stone, if you will. All right, and Fire Marshal report, I do not have a Fire Marshal report other than Janet's taken some time off. Unfortunately, her husband, for those of you that knew, Frank Morgan passed away. His service was a few weeks ago and my heart goes out to that family. I've known them both for, you know, twenty-five years. It was a sad day, but we're here to support Janet for anything she needs. We did send flowers from the town and I was at the service and it was, it was quite an impactful service. It was very, very nice. Resident Trooper report, we had four criminal, non-criminal investigations, six accident investigations, two infractions, three warnings, two hundred and twenty-nine miscellaneous requests for service. And then we're continuing with our post-training. We did have our evaluation by the state, the state police, and they had nothing but great things to say. We're one of the few towns that has taken this police officer standardized training to harm. Joe Witkowski has kind of taken that under his wing. And I hate to think that there's towns doing away with their police department because they didn't want to commit to this training. It's important, it's important that we keep our police officers, that we keep their accreditation, and we're not gonna lose officers in this town.
Because towns have done that.
Towns are doing away with their police officers because they, they do not want to go through this training and I just don't think that's an option for us. You know, we talk about it from a speed standpoint, from a traffic standpoint, from just an overall. You know, we talk about it from a speed standpoint, from a traffic standpoint, from just an overall crime standpoint, having a police presence is, is, is very important. I will stand by that. Even still, like, we still don't have enough shifts being filled. We need more. We've been doing extra surveillance, or if you will, or, or speed control on Minor, South Street and Squire Road as of late. Is along with three seventeen, Chirp Street and Wellers Bridge and Davenport, those are our focus areas, still. And that is all I have. Other business?
No, that was a lot. Thank you.
It was a thick meeting. Thank you, guys. Less to follow up on.
I can't wait to get home with my puppy.
So are you gonna make a motion?
I'll make a motion adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?